Welcome back. Thank you for your patience. We'll move right into the student representatives' report. Ms. DeBian, the floor is yours.
So, a couple of announcements. There is a new after-school homework help and tutoring program that is now being offered to students. The program is available every Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 2:00 to 3:30 after school. On February 13th, seniors interested in attending Hoyok Community College were able to meet with an admissions representative to receive an instant decision on their application. The students in AP Research are currently gathering data, excuse me, for their research papers. Students in the high school have been helping these students by taking surveys and participating in the interviews. The finished papers will be presented and submitted to the college board in spring. A school-wide spirit rally was held on the last day before February break. Each class showed their school spirit by wearing their designated Westside color and competing in fun games. Every quarter, the two classes with the best attendance get to vote on a fun activity to participate in. For having the best attendance last quarter, the sophomore and junior classes were able to play in a basketball game during the school day. The WSHS Chorus sponsored talent show on Thursday, February 16th. The winner was given the opportunity to perform at the school-wide spirit rally. The WSHS Student Gov. is hosting Spring Fling on March 17th. NHS's food drive began yesterday and will be collecting non-perishable food items until March 17th. Students willing to donate can do so at all three lunches between now and that date. The students at West Springfield High School want to congratulate Mrs. Pentiliakis for winning the MASC Administrator of the Year Award and Mr. Florence for receiving Excellence in Teaching Award. Lastly, we also want to congratulate the Students of the Month: Jaudi Alaline, Sophia Soto, Angel Novero Coronado, and Ethan Dobrin. These students were nominated by their teachers for constantly showcasing the values of the Westside way while in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our student rep? Seeing none, we'll move on to school committee reports, starting with budget.
Thank you, Mayor. The Budget Subcommittee has been meeting on a weekly basis to work on the FY '24 budget. The good news is the Student Opportunity Act was funded in the, was fully funded in the governor's budget. The district will be able to move many positions that had previously been on ESAR to the LEA budget. We will continue to meet on a weekly basis until the budget is finalized. Thank you.
Questions for our Budget Chair? Seeing none, we'll move on to curriculum and instruction.
There is no curriculum and instruction report for this meeting. We have not met.
Facilities.
It's on the agenda, facilities later, so that will be for again. And policies, same thing. Policy on the agenda.
Any other updated reports for the school committee by its members? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of open session minutes. We have four sets of minutes from January and February. I'll entertain a motion, Ms. Farrell?
Yeah. Motion to approve open session minutes from January 10th, 2023, January 18th, 2023, January 24th, 2023, February 14th, 2023.
Second.
A motion and a second for four sets of minutes. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous. New business! Boys' baseball field trip to New Jersey. Coach Gonzera is here to tell us about it. Floor is yours, Garrett.
Built some camaraderie around the program. It's been a great opportunity for our athletes, our goal is to give them the best possible experience in high school. And I think that's not just playing their 18 games, and I want to make it a better time for them and something they'll remember forever. So, basically what we put together is a trip leaving on March 24th after practice. We would have a parent meeting. We'd have dinner, and then we would, we have a, the school van as well as renting a van from All-Star in Agawam. And we would leave the night of the 24th. We would play two scrimmages on Saturday, one against Audubon High School and West Stepford High School. Then we would return to the hotel, shower, have dinner as a team. And then on Sunday, we would have another scrimmage against Gloucester Catholic in the morning, and then we would head back on that Sunday. So, the, the charge is $50 an athlete. We usually take about 20 athletes of our C-team plus a few extra kids because obviously when you're 21 innings and you need a lot of pitching, and so we take some extra athletes and it gives us an opportunity to see what our athletes can do. Because obviously, as you know, whether in the Northeast as of today, you never know what you're going to get or where you're going to be as far. A lot of times, we're in the gym for most of the time, so we're kind of playing behind the eight ball, just as well as everybody else is out here, but I like to give us as much advantage as possible. So, we charge $50, but the Booster Club pays the difference for money we have raised in the past. So, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve West Springfield High School Boys' Baseball Field Trip to New Jersey from March 24th through the 26th of 2023.
Second.
Ms. Farrell? Put your hand up. Any questions, comments, concerns?
So, if there is any student who can't afford the $50, is there a way that they can?
Yeah, the Booster Club would pay for it. We make sure that every kid's able to go if they're, you know, part of the 20 kids we'd be asking to go, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How come you guys don't go further south, fly on side?
I try and keep it as close as possible and as far as possible. Enfield, Enfield High School actually sold our idea and they'll be down there at the same time as well, so. When I was calling to make this happen, he was like, "I thought I already talked to him." I'm like, "No, this is West Springfield." He's like, "Oh, I talked to another guy." He was, "Enfield?" I'm like, "Let's, right down the road, but not us," so.
Cool. All right, with no further questions, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.
Appreciate it. You guys have a good night.
Looking for another state title this year, Garrett. Item B, the 2023-2024 School Calendar. Dr. Guile?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Can't believe it's this time of year to be talking about next year. But we are bringing forward the proposed 2023-2024 School Calendar to the school committee for discussion and approval. You'll see the calendar by month with the important dates highlighted such as professional development, holidays, and parent-teacher conferences. We are proposing that August 28th, 2023 will be our first day back from summer for staff. This will kick off three days of professional development prior to students returning, students in grades 1 through 12 returning on August 31st. Kindergarten would be on September 1st and preschool on September 5th. The last day of school for the majority of our students would be on June 13th, 2024. Please be aware, we are waiting to hear back from the Big E with regards to reserving the Coliseum, I believe it is. That being said, graduation would be tentatively scheduled for June 2nd, 2024.
Do I have a motion to approve the proposed calendar? Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the 2023-2024 School Year Calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Comments, concerns? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous. Contract approval for the new superintendent. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second based off of the approval from the executive session. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Not much there for me today. We have the the monthly report on employment, and I didn't know if anybody had any questions on that. There aren't usually questions, but...
Oh, and I forgot to announce, actually, the, we have two state playoffs the next two days.
Woburn, Woburn? In basketball?
And what? Hockey's tomorrow in Groton at 7:00 against, I'll, I'll announce at the end. I'll double check. And then basketball is Thursday at 5:30. That's who they're playing, Woburn? Woburn at Westside High. And then Ms. Thompson brought to our attention, there's, there's Track Stars, there's, wrestling's had a good year, so I think Cheerleading won a regional or state championship. So, once it's all over, we'll do announcements of everyone and we'll bring the athletes in for recognition.
Yeah, we don't want to miss anybody.
Yeah. I was saying diving, yeah. I was writing it down. I was like, "I don't want to miss anyone," so I won't say anyone, but I already screwed that up, so. Presentations, Tatum School 2022 Accountability Data. Kate, the floor is yours.
Okay, when I change the slides, I'm just going to hit the down arrow, or, okay. Enter. Thank you. All right. A good evening, School Committee. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm in my fourth year as principal at Tatum and continue to feel blessed to be surrounded by talented staff, engaged parents and guardians, and terrific Tatum Tiger students. We continue to live by our Student Friendly Mission Statement. We are Tatum Tigers and we will roar to soar. As I've stated in the past, this Student Friendly Mission Statement was a collaborative effort and serves as our guide at Tatum. The School Council and I worked to develop a meaningful school improvement plan, which is aligned to the District Improvement Plan, as well as the District's Equity Guiding Principles and District's MTSS, or Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Framework, which helps educators provide academic and behavioral strategies for students with various needs. Effective instruction at Tatum includes instructional practices that reflect high and equitable expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work. Engage all students and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests, and levels of readiness. Our new ELA curriculum, Into Reading, has been implemented, and teachers are working hard to get to know the curriculum and apply it in their classrooms. As with any new program, change is hard and takes time. In addition, Tatum School's climate team revised the handbook this year and included a family version to provide clear behavioral expectations for respecting loop, learning ourselves, others, and property. Differentiated instruction, universal design for learning and use of rubrics for clear behavioral and academic expectations are all best practices to help us exercise effective instruction. Special education practices at Tatum reflect inclusionary best practices. This year, for the first time, we implemented a co-teaching program in grade four and a grade four and five classroom. I'd be remiss not to thank the Special Education Department for their support with this model. I recently sent a survey to the parents of students in the co-taught classrooms. The results are positive. The majority of respondents claim that they strongly believe the co-teaching classroom has provided academic, social, and emotional benefits, and would want a co-taught classroom for their child again if given the opportunity. With permission, parents shared the following sentiments. "This is my first, this is my child's first year in a co-taught classroom, and arguably the first time that she has had significant measurable gains in her learning and progress in multiple areas." Another parent wrote, "The stability of the classroom is unprecedented. My daughter has suffered greatly due to behavioral problems in the classroom in previous years." And a third parent wrote, "Every kid needs at least one adult to give their child undivided attention for moments a day. Co-teaching provides a much better balance of time in this way." So, I thank the following teachers who were brave and willing to try this model, and a couple of them are here tonight. Mrs. Amanda Pedro, our special education teacher, and Mrs. Mulvey, our special education paraprofessional. So, thank you. The next few slides highlight our focus on students' social, emotional, and health needs. As you know, this has been a focus since our return from remote learning. It is equally as needed today as it was the day we returned. Students' social, emotional, and health needs at Tatum include fostering a teaching and learning environment that maintains a safe and collaborative community that motivates students to take academic risks, challenge themselves, and claim ownership of their learning. Mrs. LaCrensky, our school adjustment counselor, works tirelessly to meet the needs of students and helps staff with skills needed to support students' overall social, emotional, and health needs. As the largest tier and the foundation for the entire MTSS framework, Tier One encompasses the entire school with core instruction and basic interventions. In addition, she has added sensory walks in the hallways and helped each classroom create a calm corner. At the Tier Two level, some students need a little extra assistance in meeting their academic and behavioral goals, and it is in this Tier Two that individuals receive that help. This can be obtained through small group counseling on self-management, a calm club, and daily check-in, check-out to support behavioral goals. Tier Three gives students individualized supports and can include assistance from outside agencies such as pediatricians, behavioral counselors, or family therapists. To strengthen connections and community at Tatum, we encouraged buddy classrooms, both at grade levels and at mixed grade levels. To say the students love their buddies is an understatement. It is precious to be witness to this beautiful sense of community. And in the picture on the left, Grace in grade four is reading with Alessandra in grade two, and the picture on the right, Camden, grade three, is making, about to make slime with his brother Carter in grade one. As part of our school improvement plan, we are constantly monitoring progress with data. We started the year analyzing the Spring 2022 MCAS results and beginning of the year data. To this point, the iReady diagnostics for both reading and math have been positive. Other data points have also supported the staff to continuously monitor students' understanding and progress, including observations, daily work products, as well as other means of progress monitoring, including Dibbles, phonics screeners, Spire, AVMR. In short, we are constantly looking at student data to identify supports as needed. Our accountability data, based on Spring 2022 MCAS results, are the following. Tatum received a school accountability rating of 32%. This number is an indication of the school's overall performance relative to other schools that serve similar grades and is calculated using multiple years of data for all accountability indicators. All subgroups, which include all students, high needs, low income, and students with disabilities, saw a decline in the 2022 overall achievement results. And that would include ELA, math, and science, technology, and engineering compared to the 2019 results. The two bar graphs represent all grades 3 to 5 in both ELA on the left and math on the right. The blue represents exceeding expectations. The green represents meeting expectations. The yellow, or orange, is partially meeting expectations, and the red is not meeting expectations. I want to remind you that teaching and learning were severely interrupted since 2019 due to the pandemic. We went into this year knowing that our students would need a lot of Tier One support on best practices and scaffolding in order to meet the grade-level expectations. To date, we have serviced many students at a Tier Two level as well. And to date, we are utilizing our IST, or Instructional Support Team, process to further address concerns as they arise. This is the iReady math data, and the top bar represents the mid-year data and the bottom bar represents the beginning-of-the-year data. So, as you can see, we've got some trending in the right direction. 24% of students are on or above grade level compared to 6 at the beginning of the year. 27% of students are on early grade level compared to 13% at the beginning of the year. 46% are one grade level below compared to 62% at the beginning of the year. And 3% are more than one grade level below compared to 19% at the beginning of the year. So, in short, we are growing in the color green and shrinking in the colors of red and yellow. Now, with that said, half of our students are still below grade level according to these results. Our two math specialists are working with teachers to identify the neediest of students for intervention supports. This slide conveys the iReady ELA diagnostic results. So, again, the top bar represents the mid-year scores and the bottom bar represents the fall or the beginning-of-the-year scores. 30% of students are on or above grade level compared to 14% at the beginning of the year. 27% of students are on early grade level compared to 17% at the beginning of the year. 35% are one grade level below compared to 49% at the beginning of the year. And 8% are more than one grade level below compared to 20% at the beginning of the year. Again, and in short, we are growing in the color green and shrinking in the colors of yellow and red. Again, with that said, 43% of our students are still below grade level according to these results. And our reading specialists work with teachers to identify the neediest students for their intervention and supports. Now, I recognize that hard data is important. And I look forward to continued growth in all types of assessments, especially including the iReady end-of-year diagnostics and Spring 2023 MCAS. However, sometimes it is the stuff that is hard to put a number on that touches the heart the most. So, I brought two Student Council representatives who are willing to share a little more about what makes Tatum special. They are co-presidents for the February-March timeline, timeframe for Student Council and grade-five students Gianna and Charlotte. Come on up.
The Student Council has been very active at Tatum School for the past 20 years. Our purpose is to help students learn at an early age the importance of giving back to the community and supporting our school. Some of the activities that we do throughout the year include the Giving Tree, where we help needy families in town, our Super Bowl collection that collects food items to benefit the parish cupboard, a school-wide walk for charity, helping our local animal shelter, and doing random acts of kindness. The students thrive to be good role models to others. Being part of Student Council helps us to become better leaders in our school and community.
So, in this slide, you'll see Student Council, both students and staff wrapping gifts collected from the Giving Tree, where Tatum families bought gifts and wrapped them for, I believe it was nine families and 12 students in town. So, thank you, Charlotte and Gianna. Part of what makes Tatum special is our commitment to the community service and fueling the greater good. Thank you, School Committee, Mayor Reichelt, and of course, Dr. Perrone and his central office staff for your time and commitment to Tatum School and all the schools in West Springfield. The Tatum Tiger featured with me in this picture is our Tatum alum and West Springfield High School student. She helped greet our incoming first graders at First Grade Orientation. Thank you.
Questions from the committee? Ms. Farrell?
So, just so I have a clear understanding of this, with the iReady math and the ELA data, my understanding was, was that the only students that are sort of at the proficient or meeting expectations and exceeding expectations are those that are in the black section of green? So, for the math piece, it's 24%, and the ELA, it's 30%, so we still have like 70% not meeting expectations. I, I guess, I wasn't quite sure that it was explained that way when you were talking about it. So, I just, just, I think that was what we were told with the iReady, is that the, it has to be in the highest group, the four lowest groups are really below, below where they should be.
The wording, thank you, Nancy, the wording that the iReady program uses is the green with the zebra stripes, per se, is on or above grade level according to your grade-level standard. The green, that's just plain green, is early on grade level for the, for your grade-level standard. So, a student who's in grade five at the middle of the year who is in green is working toward the grade-level standards in grade five. But they are, are early on grade five, so there is room to go. Room to move.
Anyone else?
I, excuse me. Start coughing. I was curious, I actually went back and grabbed your presentation from May of last year because I was kind of curious just to look at the, the data from last year to this year, knowing that it's a bit, it's different students in a way. But I was, I was sort of curious when the dates were of the, of the results. Because you have beginning-of-the-year, mid-year, because there were dates for, when you presented in May of last year, we had September 2021 and then February 2022. And I just didn't see dates, so I'm assuming September for the beginning, but is the mid-year?
It was done in January.
January, okay.
Mid to late January.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Marcus?
So, Kate, you, in looking at the MCAS results, you mentioned the 32% accountability. That is a drop of 20 percentage points from 2019. And the way accountability is done, you're comparing apples to apples. So, you're, you're being compared, Tatum School's being compared to all other schools of that grade level who also had the pandemic. So, what do you attribute such a large, which is really an extremely large drop in accountability? And what, what are you specifically doing to address that? Because that's a troubling drop.
Absolutely. It's a troubling number to see, for sure. I'm, I can tell you that, you know, the pandemic was hard for everybody. I know we were not alone in that. But certainly, the effects from it have been troubling, and we've had an excessive absence of students and staff that have contributed to that number, in my opinion. In addition, I've been in the district since 2009, so I've been looking at MCAS data either as a teacher or a vice-principal, not just a principal. And, you know, we've never, I've never been in a position to be really lower than the state before. So, that's troubling as well. So, it, it does make you wonder what's, what's going on in the, in the classrooms at Tatum, what's going on in the district with the curriculum. And I certainly think that some of it points to the curriculum that we are using. So, I think it's been a good, although a hard, change to implement a new program this year. It's a needed change. I think as teachers, myself included in that, continue with the Science of Reading training in addition to the implementation training that we're getting, that we'll
training in addition to the implementation training that we're getting, that we'll start to see some, some better results going forward. I also think that the, if you think about the math curriculum, we're in year, most schools are in year three of that curriculum. And again, anytime you implement a new curriculum, it's hard. It's hard work. It takes teachers a while to, to really understand the program, the resources involved in the program, and get the support that they need too to implement that. So I'm optimistic that we're going to start to see some numbers trending in the right direction toward the end of this year and hopefully with those MCAS results.
Any further questions, Ms. Farrell?
Kind of, you back on what colleagues said. I know that probably aren't specific answers, but. You look at sort of the district, district-wide and what's happening, everybody was using the same curriculum for the same length of time. If we look at the SGP's student growth percentages in grade four for math, last year was thirty-two and ELA was thirty-nine. So when you get below forty, even forty, I consider forty to forty-five on the low side, but when you're below forty, you're, you're not having the growth of students that they need to have to move the same way. ELA, thirty-eight, the one plus was grade five, was forty-eight for math. As you said, historically, Tatum has outperformed the state in last year. They were significantly lower than the state. And when you looked at, at the accountability rating is taking all, any school that has three through eight in it and putting them all together in one big pile. But to me, like, when you look at the DART schools, those are schools that have similar, similar populations to you, similar numbers, similar special education, similar EL students in terms of that. And if you look at the TERT profile, Tatum was significantly lower in terms of percentile and achievement was the lowest in most of the categories related to the DART schools. So I think we have concerns. I think as a committee, we want you to hear the concerns and know that, you know, hopefully this does not continue and we do see growth at Tatum.
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to just add on that, you know, my first and second year at Tatum, we had some very high class sizes too, especially in those testing grades. And not to say that, you know, a teacher can't manage a classroom with high sizes, but there were also some significant needs in those classrooms combined with a pandemic. So I'm grateful to all of you for approving the extra positions at Tatum to accommodate smaller class sizes this year. I do think that we are able to better meet the needs of students, especially socially and emotionally, but also academically.
I think I forgot to thank the teachers and the students for coming tonight. So we do appreciate your attendance at tonight's meeting and joining us at the meeting tonight. Thank you. And Kate, thank you too.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Comments, concerns?
I just wanted to say, Gianna and Charlotte, you did a great job presenting. I don't know if this is the first time you've ever presented to a larger audience, but you did fantastic.
Ms. Thompson?
I just wanted to also say, as a parent of one of the larger class sizes, I'm very excited to see, now that we're in smaller sizes, the difference this year brings because I know the kids in those classes are much happier than smaller class sizes and I'm sure that the teachers are too, so.
Well, I just wanted, you know, make it publicly known that the previous year, we had approved two teachers for Tatum for grade four and grade five so that the, there would be an extra teacher to support the students and I, I don't, they were hired. So we knew, we saw the large class sizes, we approved teachers to be hired, but then I think when you posted, maybe you couldn't find anybody to fill the slots. We never really heard what happened with it.
Yeah, that is true. To this day, it is still very difficult to find highly qualified candidates. But at that time, I don't even recall a candidate being available to interview. So it, it's been trying to get people. And I appreciate that gesture, but we were not able to accommodate that.
All right. Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. Students, do you want to get a picture with all of us? Since they waited patiently?
We won't bite. Well, mayor money, but.
All right, the interim assistant superintendent's report, Dr. Guile. We have the PCC update on Coburn and the facilities update.
Yes, so PCC met on February 21st at 7:00 PM via Zoom to discuss the remaining school projects, Coburn School projects, excuse me, and to get an update regarding the elementary school feasibility study. As for the Coburn building project, the kiln has arrived, folks. That's been a long time coming. It is actually being, or it has been installed and in the process of hooking up the electrical and the HVAC. We also discussed the next steps in the process with respect to closing out the project, which is to finish the paving. There's a second coat to be added and the landscaping. Both will occur once the weather is cooperative enough, anticipating end of April during April break. Fingers crossed we'll be there. In terms of the elementary schools feasibility study, the project, there was little to report out. Basically, it was a quick conversation about how the, the project has evolved a little bit to capture the middle school and the potential for expansion there, which is a nice segue into our facilities subcommittee notes. And our meeting was on the 22nd of February and we reviewed CBA's findings from that visit. I know Kathy and others were, were there. I unfortunately was not able to attend, but Jim Hanifin presented some information and I believe everybody has a copy of that presentation. That was coupled with the work that we've been doing around the geovisual software platform, which for folks who don't know this and for those who may have forgotten, it's that software that allows us to redraw boundary lines for the schools and to look at different scenarios based on redistricting essentially. It's a very, very cool product, by the way, and there's a lot of potential and it's frankly, it's, it's already paid for itself as far as I'm concerned. But that being said, there's a lot of work to be done. The subcommittee's recommendation was to basically invite Jim Hanifin back to the, the table, the school committee at large, to have a deeper conversation about the complexities associated with redistricting, renovation, building. There's a lot to be considered and we wanted to jointly present, and I say we, CBA, us, we wanted to jointly present the scenarios that we were looking at just to better, to allow us to better conceptualize what the implications of redistricting looks like. And then to also hear from Jim because he had many, many questions as our conversations grew deeper into what the future of our schools looks like. So to be continued at our 28th, March 28th meeting.
Thank you. Questions on that? Ms. Farrell?
It seems like we've kind of a little bit all over the place in terms of, of what we're doing with facilities. I'm just a little bit confused if, if you look at these two sort of proposals, if we're not going to add the fifth grade, we needed eight classrooms, I think it was eight, eight classrooms, eight offices, storage, conference rooms, toilets, which you would need anyways. But then if we're going to add the fifth grade, we need fourteen rooms. So eight of them are already taken because you needed eight. So that means you've only got six for fifth graders, which seems to me like wouldn't work. So, and I guess I, I think if, if the fifth grade was going to be moved to the middle school at all, I think that the, there needs to be community involvement, like a, a redistricting type of team representing the community administration, school committee, parents before, in order to move forward with, with that idea, that I think there would have to be a lot of input from the community before we move forward with that idea. And I, I don't quite understand how the rooms would work if we needed eight and then we're going to add the fifth grade, we only add fourteen. It seems like we wouldn't have enough room for the fifth graders.
If I may, yeah, I think, Nancy, you just captured one of the talking points that we engaged in the other night is, I think for, for me personally, I can't speak on Jim's behalf or others, but for me, going through the scenarios, utilizing the geovisual platform allowed us to concretely, as concretely as we can, appreciate what the additional sections would look like at each facility. To your exact point, I, I feel like as, as Jim was doing that, CBA was doing that work, it was maybe not with enough of the necessary information to really present the full scope of work, if that makes sense. So hence the, the rationale, the, the need for us to all come together to have that conversation where we are able to present scenarios, get that feedback, and then CBA, Jim can interpret, okay, what, what would that really realistically look like? And clearly understand what, what our needs are. But yeah, that, that was a great, great point.
And I'll just, I want to chime in here too. I know it seems like we've been going kind of back and forth on this topic forever, but it's, and I know it's been happening long before me. We had different master plans and then everything kind of got set aside as we built the high school and then as we moved forward, then again, we got awarded Coburn, so that kind of changed everything we had. And now we're in a position where I think overall, and I'm sure some people will disagree, our schools are, the ones that haven't just been rebuilt are in generally good condition. You know, they could have more air conditioning, they could have more space here or there, but they're not in the condition that Coburn was before. They're not falling down. Not that that should be our standard, but we're in a tough space now where we do have four elementary schools and John Ashley that are in generally good condition. We don't have tons of space concerns right now, but we know we need to plan ahead to improve those schools and eventually add space, maybe some at the middle school, maybe some somewhere else. And we know that potentially that could include is closing some schools. So I know we're in a very difficult space having that conversation, and I agree with you Nancy, that any redistricting should be done at a community level with a redistricting committee and significant community involvement, support and forums. But I do just want to give the school committee as a whole credit for kind of wrestling with this topic for the past, I don't know, couple of years. Well, yeah, I mean, so and the idea for the public, getting this feasibility study done and taking a look at it was, now that we had generally the idea of the committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, committee, is to move the Ks back to the, move the kindergartens back to neighborhood schools. The only issue is to do that, they all need, all the schools need additional space. And with the way things cost now, that is a lot of money to get us to a place where we can move the kindergarteners back, but none of those schools are going to be brand-new like Coburn. So now we're kind of in a philosophical discussion, a debate with ourselves of, do we do move forward with that scenario or do we look at potentially building a brand-new school at a site somewhere in West Springfield so that you would have a Coburn-like school for the other school? And that would include more school closures. But if we're spending the same kind of money, what would we rather have as a community? So that will also be a community conversation, but the, and the reason that hasn't happened sooner is because we want to have, we want to go to the community with hard data. We don't want to just say, well, this is what we like to do and we don't really know how much it's going to cost. So that's what's been going on kind of for folks watching behind the scenes with facilities sub and the committee as a whole, is talking about and understanding the, the physical structure that the schools are in right now, what's needed space-wise and how much that's all going to cost. And it's a big number. Ms. Farrell, did I sum that up enough?
Yes, and I think our, our other sort of problem, good problem, bad problem, is that we have ESER money.
Burning a hole in our pocket.
Because we, we don't want to, we want to use that money in a way that's responsible and it seems to update, we can't really just update a facility. We have to use the money according to the correct guidelines for ESER. So if we could do some additions to schools or possibly some renovations to some of the buildings, but we're on a limited timeframe with that. So I think we have to think about how we're going to get that done so that we use that money effectively to upgrade, to change some of our facilities and maybe to add on to someplace a possible addition. So I think we, I feel a sense of urgency so that, but I feel like we need to get a plan.
Yes. And I think we saw that, and speaking of Tatum Night, we saw that at Tatum, you know, we are the bureaucracy, we are the government, but there are rules that we have to follow as a government, as a municipal government as well. And that's unfortunately where we get like the Tatum portables. They're not attached because once you touch the building, it's all these other things. So one, a million other project becomes a three million other project for even this-sized community that becomes unreachable to do something like just add four, four classrooms. And I know a lot of times we have that conversation, we get stuck because what, when it is a small project becomes a large project. And even now with the ESER money, what, what could be, what should be a small project is a much larger project to do something just like add four classrooms because we have schools that are fifty-plus years old. Any other questions, comments, concerns on that? Facilities? Seeing none, we will move on to the business manager's report. We have nine items under the use of ESER funds. So we're trying to spend those, spend those dollars as fast as possible. Adam, you want to take it away here?
Yeah, thank you. I didn't intend on my first one being this lengthy, so I apologize, but it's two meetings' worth of approval, so I'm going to try to get through these. The first is purchase of laptops for the elementary and middle school teachers that will replace their Chromebooks. A partial purchase of these will be paid using ECF grant funding that the town has and the rest will be paid using ESER.
Ms. Farrell?
So of all these motions, the budget subcommittee did vote unanimous affirmative in favor of all of them. And the motion is, motion to approve the use of ESER funds in the amount of $135,000 to purchase laptops for elementary and middle school teachers.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, how low in favor, opposed, unanimous?
Next is the renewal of the geovisual software that Neil had referred to, also use ESER funds to purchase that.
Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the use of ESER funds in the amount of $11,960 for the renewal of the Power School Enrollment Projection Software.
Second.
Second.
That wasn't Power School, it's just?
It's a, it's a.
Oh, is it part of Power School?
Yeah, it's a part of Power School, yeah.
Isn't this the thing that does all the?
Yeah.
Oh, it's part of, oh, okay, cool. I was going to say, I meant to say it before, that software is really cool.
Yeah.
And a good conversation and a good tool to see how we can move lines. Sorry Nancy, I was wrong. The motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.
Next is the purchase of Amplify, which is an online assessment tool for K through five students to help identify reading and intervention needs, again with the use of ESER funds.
Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the use of ESER funds in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars to purchase the Amplify online assessment platform for K through five students.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.
Next is the professional development for teachers to be able to implement Amplify.
Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the use of ESER funds in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars to provide PD to staff using the Amplify online assessment tool.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.
Next is the purchase of SIPS resource kits, intervention materials and professional development for teachers, grades one through five. These kits will provide explicit intervention of foundation skills to these grade levels.
Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the use of ESER funds in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars to purchase the SIPS teachers resource kits.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.
Next is the purchasing of a three-year Mystery Science license. This software will work with our current science and intuitive reading programs to help kids better understand and communicate about the world around them.
Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the use of ESER funds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to purchase the Mystery Science License.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.
Next is to approve additional hours for the prior school business manager, Carrie, to support the transition of myself through June thirtieth and to help with some work on the town side through that time.
Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the use of ESER funds in the amount of eight thousand dollars to pay the prior school business manager, Carrie Sheehan, to support the transition of the new school business manager through June thirtieth, 2023.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.
Next is a stipend to the district data systems coordinator for their work currently as the administrative assistant to the superintendent through April of 2023.
Motion to approve the use of ESER funds to pay a monthly stipend in the amount of one thousand one hundred dollars to the district data systems coordinator for their work as the administrative assistant to the superintendent through the month of April of 23.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.
Next is to update the card readers and intercoms at the high schools, similar to what we're doing at the middle school and other elementary schools. This is a little late only because as central maintenance did some work around this, our, our current system would need some updating, software and electronics, and that would be a little more costly than kind of including newer upgrades with what we're doing at the elementary and middle school. So it was a little late to the table, but we can use some ESER funds to make those upgrades as well.
Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the use of ESER funds up to the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the procurement of card swipe equipment and intercom system equipment as proposed for West Springfield High School schools pertinent to quotes received from Ben Parquette, West Springfield Central Maintenance.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.
So lastly for ESER is HVAC and door upgrades at the church as these are needed to facilitate the transition of our transition program to that facility.
Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the use of ESER funds up to the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the procurement of HVAC and door upgrades as proposed for the First Congregational Church pertinent to quotes received from Ben Parquette, West Springfield Central Maintenance.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous. We're done with ESER, but not done yet?
Yeah, last one, last one. This is for the high school to establish a student activity fund for the WS HSD activist club for collecting funds through approved fundraisers.
Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve a student activity fund for the West Springfield High School SD activist club.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.
I have one comment.
Okay.
I would just like to say what took us ten minutes here probably took us four hours at budget subcommittee meeting.
And I truly appreciate the work you do because I do not want to have a four-hour meeting, although I do attend some of those meetings and you guys all do a great job. Thank you. No, it was, yeah, it was multiple, four four-hour, four one-hour meetings, yeah. Old business, transitioning over to Ms. Leveras with policy. We have seventeen policies that we're going to take, all related to fiscal management that we're going to take at once.
We're going to take them all at once because the policy subcommittee unanimously voted in favor. They went through the budget committee and Carrie Sheehan, so.
We've had a lot of eyes on them.
Do you want me to read each one or?
Yeah, just so, I mean, it's, read, so Section D fiscal management and just read the, the title of each one. You don't got to read like the file, DB, whatever that is.
Okay, make a motion to approve Section D fiscal management, annual budget, budget adoption procedures, budget transfer authority, grants, proposals and special projects, federal funds supplement, not subplant, that's a new one, authorized signatures, bonded employees and officers, fiscal accounting and reporting, audits, purchasing authority, procurement requirements, payment procedures, expense reimbursements, travel policy, monthly mileage log, conference and meeting cost approval and reinforcement form, expense reimbursements, mileage, conferences and meetings.
That's it, we're seventeen.
That's it.
On all of those, are there any discussions? Any questions, comments, concerns on any, any of the items? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous. We have one more item under old business, after-school tutoring program update. Dr. Guile?
Thank you. Quick update, the high school, middle school, John Ashley, Coburn, Fozzie, Mitnik and Tatum have all launched their support programs with the goal being to address the learning loss through highly engaging learning experiences. To this point, site coordinators in each of those listed schools have been working with the staff, administration to identify students who would be great for this experience. As you heard earlier from Ms. DeBian, the high school is often running with that. We have, each school, excuse me, has put a slightly different spin on the experiences. However, the common thread is really addressing the mathematics and literacy foundational skills. And I know there was interest in appreciating the participation rate of students. I was not able to get that information, but I will, maybe for our next meeting, I can do a report out, a report out on that.
Questions in the committee? Ms. Farrell?
Memorial School does not have a tutoring program.
So they are not participating in this experience per se. They do have the CES after-school academic or tutoring experience, which is a partnership collaboration. So they felt with that, they were, they were in a good situation to support the students in that capacity.
So you said you were going to get for us the numbers along with that. Can you get us the number of hours that each school offers per week for students? I know the high school was three days, so I'm assuming that it's an hour after school, but it'd be, be nice to see what the other schools are offering, how much tutoring is available to students.
Any other questions? Comments, concerns? Seeing none, thank you. Public comment? Ms. Granger? The next school committee meeting will be March fourteenth, 2023, three, six PM. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved in second and without objection, we are adjourned. Good night, Westside.